Hope they pray for us.
Yeah, yes.
Call to order, the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of our minutes from the October 3, 2016 meeting moved by Mr. Palamini, second by Mr. Motivaren. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Assists unanimously with one absent. Next item is Resolution 2016-17, transfer of 1235 Albany Street to the City of Schenectady. Moved by Mr. Palamini, second by Mr. Motivaren. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's adopted. Six ayes and one absent. Next item, Resolution 2016-18, transfer of various properties to the City of Schenectady. Entertained a motion, moved by Mr. Palamini, second by Mr. Motivaren. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's adopted. Any other business to come before the agency?
Moved by Mayor.
Moved by Carrazzo, second by Mr. Palamini. All in favor?
Aye.
The agency stands adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, call to order. I gotta wait for Trump. Call to order, administrative efficiency. The first item up is clergy appreciation month. Self-explanatory is to acknowledge some of the clergy in our city which do such good work.
All in favor?
All in favor. The second item is smoke-free cars with people less, persons less than 16 years old or age of, or younger, he tried to say. There were some questions last time about enforcement. I did speak with Chief Clifford. He is in favor of this legislation. He did acknowledge, as far as enforcement goes, that they would treat it similarly to cell phone usage in cars. They enforce it in that manner. And, let's see, what else? I think he sent something like that to me. He did acknowledge that there would be some barriers, first of all. Notification of law, that he would like to see a PR campaign to notify the public about this law, which of course would be an excellent idea. And especially for like visitors and so forth. But, in the whole, he says it would be a great addition perhaps to the vehicle and traffic law. So, any additional questions?
As far as the PR goes, it would probably have to be grassroots, so it just probably don't have to be budgeted for like up till four.
Normal media outlets, neighborhood.
Grassroots kind of thing.
Exactly.
So, in that case, because obviously we would have people come out of town that wouldn't be aware, how would the police handle that type of situation?
I'm sure they have discretion as with everything. If someone's a visitor, I would think, I would hope that they might just let it slide.
My, because obviously we're gonna have a considerable number of visitors coming in very soon, so.
So what would the penalty be if someone is smoking with an underage person in the car?
I do have.
About 10 years.
Yeah. It's a smaller, it's a smaller fine of, that's something we can negotiate, but something in the neighborhood of $40 or $50.
So is there an escalating thing? So if somebody gets caught, you know, like the first time, like sort of like the DUI, DWI, the first time this happens? What, is there anything ultimately at the end of it after however many times this is determined?
I would actually like to see that put in place, so if there's multiple offenders that the bill might escalate to, I wouldn't want to go over maybe $75 or $100, but at least something to acknowledge that you're a multiple offender, you know, you really need to stop.
We had talked about other municipalities. Is there any, can you give us a little information on success stories or any challenges that other municipalities have had?
I do have some information. I know in Maine, it's been put in place, let's see, Bangor, Maine, and Augusta, Maine. There's been some other places within California, Arkansas, Louisiana, that have passed similar laws to that. Those might have been statewide, though. For instance, Maine's law authorizes police to hand out warnings, which would be, I think, our first step. Or warnings. And then after that, violators would get a $50 fine. California, on the other hand, authorizes fines up to $100. But I think an escalating process, as you've indicated, I think would be appropriate. So, those were the areas where California, Arkansas, Louisiana, Maine, that have implemented some instance along this way.
Yeah, I actually really like the idea of the first offense being a warning, because that kind of covers, you know, so across the board, no matter what, the first offense is always a warning.
Right, so no matter how, yeah, no matter how good we do as getting out the information, there's always gonna be some people who don't know about it.
Right.
So, having a warning, I think, is a good thing. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I think we would.
For a public hearing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, for a public hearing. So, but before we call for a public hearing, is there enough information that we can give, that's gonna be prepared to give to the public, for them to understand exactly what our legislation's gonna look like before we, you know, because they need to be able to read the legislation prior to calling for that public hearing? So we prepared it at that point, to that point?
Could certainly work with the council to get that accomplished.
Well, I would recommend redoing just like we did the ceremonial street. We called for the, we talked about it. We called for the public hearing, and then I brought a final draft tonight as we go into review, and then it's still.
Great, okay. All right. Did you move? No. Oh. Please, second.
All in favor? Any additional to come before the committee? Moved by adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Stand adjourned.
That's not here. Do you wanna call public safety, or?
Yep. Call to order, public safety, police traffic service program grant, Assistant Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a yearly grant we received this time of year. Other government's Traffic Safety Committee, and they, it was worth $20,500 for enforcement as far as aggressive drivers, seatbelt checks and so forth. This is not, we have a DWI fund to use for special enforcement there, but this kind of covers all those aggressive drives, driver type of things. It's up, I believe, $4,000 from last year, which shows our faith in this, we do a good job. You know, we do them at certain times of year, certain weeks, even through aggressive driving, different tactics to use. I ask for city council's approval for questions. There's no match, which is always important.
Good stuff.
So, if I don't come ask for any money this time.
Okay.
I said this time.
Any questions? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 100-foot aerial platform and two custom pumper fire apparatus, Mr. Ferrari.
President, Mayor, Council, how's it going tonight?
Good.
Good. The Schenectady Fire Department is in need of replacing a 100-foot aerial platform apparatus and two custom pumppers for the fire department. The department has determined that, you know, there's a real need for the acquisition of this equipment. So the fire department, along with our person bureau, requested the bids for replacement of these fire apparatus, and there were two bidders who bid, who bid these, who bid for the fire apparatus. There was the Stefen Corporation and Garrison Rescue Corporation. The lowest bidder for each of the fire apparatus were Garrison Rescue Corporation, and as we attached the difference in the pricing, I thought we did very well. And so what we're doing, we're recommending that the city, the city council and the city accept the bid from Garrison for the replacement of those two fire apparatuses. You got the chief senile here? You got any questions?
Have we done business before with Garrison?
Yes, we have, yes. We have approximately 30-year district leaders.
Any other questions?
As the, one of the busiest, or the busiest, right, fire department in the state, in the country?
Something we've been doing for nearly 20 years. We keep sort of, our power down to Valentine, it's, you know, minimal. And we require a special piece of apparatus, we have a superior care of medical equipment, jobs and life. So, actually Garrison, as you know, you said, I believe the truck bid would like $40,000 for it.
Aye.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the second part of this, go ahead.
Next item is authorize lease agreement for the 100-foot aerial platform and two custom pumppers.
The second part of this is, you know, due to the fact that now we accepted the bid, we would like to have the city, we recommended the city and the leasing to company, company that we've been leasing the fire trucks for the last two years, to enter the contract, have the city enter into contract to leasing to for the lease purchase agreement on this. Where we've, we went out, we have to get some anticipated costs, and it looks like from 2014, the interest rate, because of our very good bond rating, has decreased from 2.8 to 2.3. So not only do we got a good bid, but also got a good deal and a finite. And there again, that's the same company we've done business with for a few years.
Correct. Any questions? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other business for public safety?
Just to you, Mayor. It's come to my attention, Mayor, I want to let you know that there's been some problems in the Nicklaus Building with squatters and scavenging. I don't know what we can do about it. Is that our job to secure that? We're going to let the fire escape. Is, whose responsibility is that?
Well, the property owner needs to secure it. If they're having people that are vandalizing or whatever, a complaint comes in, we'll send their lease there to be appropriate foul.
Well, I heard this from the police.
Well, you tell me the police aren't doing their job?
I didn't say that. I just said I got this from a police officer that that was involved.
Okay, well, tell me who that police officer is, I'll assure you that he'll follow up in an appropriate manner.
I think it's been reported also.
Okay, well, I'm sure quite what the question is.
Is, can we secure it? Secure the fire escape so people can't climb it, since it's not being used for people coming down.
But it would be really the responsibility of the property owner to do that. Chief.
I can get to tomorrow if you'd like, and find out who the owner is, and contact him, find what officers I can just assume, and then we can follow that way. It's probably open numbers, like the mayor said, you know, we have limitations, but it's a public nuisance, so we can kind of talk to them that way, so I'll follow up, if that's okay with you.
Any other business for public safety?
I'm with Mayor.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I am gonna just ask that we move health and rec up, just because we have a long agenda for city development and planning, so.
Okay, go ahead and do that. All right, call to order, health and recreation. The first item on the agenda is a ceremonial resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As we all know, it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so just wanted to be able to offer this resolution and to bring attention to this very important issue that goes on, and maybe inviting some folks to accept that. Are there any questions regarding that?
I'm over.
I guess I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is all for breast cancer awareness month. October is also National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to also do a ceremonial resolution for this.
I'm over.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And gentlemen, if you'd like to wear a pink or purple tie to, for each, because it's both months, one's pink, one's purple, certainly feel free to do that next Monday.
Or a pink or purple jacket.
Or a pink or purple jacket. I don't know if you have that in your wardrobe, but hey, if you do.
It's safe to assume about socks.
Okay, whatever works for you. The next item on the agenda is the affirmative, is affirmative action advisory board. I spoke with David, and I thought that he would have some information, but he's, I don't see him here tonight. So, in any case, the affirmative action advisory board has, as you know, they, there was a representation at the last council meeting regarding the fact that in the current budget, there was no, there was no budget line to bring in-house the affirmative action manager position, which is something that we had talked about, but really haven't gotten to that point yet. The other part of it is, is also that there has not been an adopted affirmative action plan from, that the city has. So, I know that Ellie is here tonight, and if there's any other things that you want to bring forward from the, from the committee that feel like.
First of all, as the chair, I want to just apologize that my appointees came there and misstated the characterization of what we're actually doing. The current funding for the affirmative action is done out of CDPG so that it would not reflect itself in the budget that I've submitted to the council. I'm negotiating to bring that back in-house and provide the staffing. So their position was, again, an incorrect representation of what we're actually doing.
And I spoke to David, he did say that you've been working on something, and I told him that it would be on the agenda tonight, but I know that he has school, so that's been assumed why he's not here tonight. But the other part of it also, as I said, was that the city currently doesn't have an affirmative action plan, and so what, where are we with that in terms of adopting one? Even though I know that the manager is, we share with the city, the concern was brought forward that there was actually no adopted plan at this point.
Same plan, are you referring to the city's goals for minority participation contracts? Or?
Well, there's, well, there was a written plan, actually, same as, my understanding it's not been adopted by the city. Ellie, is that?
This manager is.
Well, the city, what you said, the city council doesn't have formally approved any of affirmative action plan. We have a part of section, city code, that is about affirmative action, and it empowers the affirmative action, can't remember the title, head affirmative action officer for the city to come up with goals, and I think what, in general, we're talking about as a plan. And so we have that, we have one that was created a number, I don't know exactly how many years ago, but a prior head affirmative action officer came up with those numbers, that's where we have the 5% and 7% that we work with, and some of the other things we work with in that plan.
A part of their, the report that was given back in January, and that was given also, there was a meeting with the mayor, I don't remember which month that the committee was held with you, that part of the request was that there actually be a formal plan because the, the committee did not feel that they had enough direction, and additionally, they felt like they didn't have enough support from the affirmative action office, not you, but that a city staff person be assigned to that, or a county person be assigned to come to the meeting. Because no one at that particular meeting has enough of a skill set to really understand all the parameters of affirmative action. So one of the things, one of the major things is getting to see if we can have the presence of the affirmative action manager at the meetings on a regular basis.
Right, trying to adjust that till we have the staff to address that.
In the meantime, do you think that we could work on getting her here until we work out, you know, having an announcement?
I think we, at the corporation council's office there, we have other people to provide some support for the board. It may not be 100% of what they would like, but we're hopefully moving in a direction to make people more happy.
So, so we can't ask for, specifically from that person to be the manager?
It depends on what the request is, they will provide her, and sometimes there's a difference of opinion of what her responsibility is and what the expectations are.
Okay, so, so we're looking at trying to, moving that into in-house?
Correct.
All right. Ellie, is there anything that you want to add or raise from the?
Well, I'll just, I'll just kind of, that we, it's good to hear that they're, that you're negotiating about an officer, but we, we were not informed that that was actually happening as a result of our, we haven't had follow-up from the meeting that we had with you regarding these different items. And then, basically, what, what isn't in writing is any kind of recruitment hiring policy specifically. That's, that's what there is no written policy about.
Are there any other questions regarding this? So, I guess I can ask you, there's no written policy regarding hiring, is that something? Can you take a look at that?
Yeah, let me look into that and see what we have pre-existing.
Okay.
And then I can tell you what exists and what doesn't. I can't say for sure that there is or isn't on something at this point, though.
Okay, all right, if you can, I can, I can bring it back to the agenda once we look at this subject. Yes, Ms. Carrazzo?
As far as the future plans, is that something we would know before the end of the budget cycle, so that we know whether I understand that a portion of that salary is paid out of CDPG, but it's certainly going to be a lot for a full-time person? So, is that something we might have an idea about before we actually go, you know, past the budget, or?
Well, again, I'm not looking to have any impact on the general fund proposal I've put forth, but yes, I can brief you on where that is, whether it'll be finalized in two weeks, I'm not, I can't say yes or no.
Just we have an idea, though, so.
We're trying to bring it together relatively quickly, but it's gonna be in two weeks, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Tom, it's? Okay, is there anything else to come before health and recreation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
If you go, go forward with government operations, just because then there's always the executive session at the end. And I see the soft pop order. Government operations, taxi meter rates. I did, again, speak with Mr. Caputo at the county in Ways and Measures. He was agreeable to moving the deadline of one month to December 1. I have since spoken to, well, had correspondence with Sergeant Harrigan. All the taxi companies have been contacted, and he's working along with Mr. Caputo to move everything through in a timely manner. That being said, we didn't really set a date in which this had to be completed in our original legislation, so I will ask that we move a resolution this evening, saying that, you know, by December 1, all of our taxis have to have their meters resealed with the new rates, the new rate that we passed, which is $4, the first, first rate, so that we can make sure that it's on record that that work has to be done by December 1.
By December 1, or?
By December 1. By December 1, yes. Is there any, are there any questions? It's pretty straightforward, I mean, we already, we already.
Yeah.
So, interesting motion. I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
There, is there anything else to come before government operations this evening?
Moved to adjourn.
And I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. John, do you wanna handle some of your own minute plans?
Yeah, I can.
Call to order, city development and planning. First item is the call for public hearing, Section 108 loan agreement, Ms.
So I just wanted to let you know, after a conversation with the corporation council and the courts of the state, I actually don't need to have a formal call for public hearing by, by noon, so it's more gonna just be like a discussion item, just to let you know. So, the city was previously authorized to commit $500,000 out of the $3 million approved with the Section 108 loan guarantee program funding, to go towards the demolition and then reconstruction of 487 Math Street. That project has kind of gone forward in a different manner, so we need to go through the steps to submit a substantial amendment to HUD to be able to change the use of the $500,000. I'm proposing to use it towards the Hillside View project up on Craig Street, for the redevelopment of 400 Craig Street and 602 Craig Street. The reason why it requires a substantial amendment is because it's going from a demolition use to a rehabilitation use. It's just semantics in the HUD world. So, in order to submit a substantial amendment, there needs to be a 30-day comment period and a public hearing, so the notice will be lodged tomorrow, I think it's at, starting the, the notice period is starting tomorrow through November 16, and a public hearing will coincide with the city council meeting on the 14th of November at 7:00 P.M.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. This $500,000 authorization for this project, by doing so, would be able to get oversight, some oversight on this, on this project, in terms of hiring MWB and things like that? Or this is something totally different?
No, this project will have those criterias in place. This conjunction during the Joseph Allen project on Albany Street, and this is around the corner on Craig Street with community builders, so that those criteria would apply not only to this portion of money, but to the whole project.
And just.
No, that's okay, good.
Add to that, as I announced at the last council meeting, the general contractor, UW Marx, is having two outreach for MWB and Section 3. One is, and they're both at Refreshing Spring Church, and one is tomorrow, the 18th, starting at 6:00, and then again on Friday, on the 21st. So, they're being proactive. I know there were some concerns with the Joseph Allen project, but they're being extremely proactive in putting the information out there and letting people know about it.
Council, this on the same time, 6:00?
Yes, and at the same place, Refreshing Spring Church.
Okay. Any other questions?
So we need to just move this to a public?
No.
No, we don't, just say for legislations needed by the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, revocable permit number 610, raw juice bar at 177 J Street.
You'll take that? I can just respond today. This is the raw juice and smoothie bar down on J Street. It'll be for an awning that's nine foot, 10 inches long, and 82 inches high and 42 inches deep. It's gonna hang a little over the city right away, and been passed by the planning commission, and everything, the paperwork's in order, so we'll move your council through.
Questions? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is. Next item is a C R Veterans Day, Mr. Riggi.
That's something we do every year, explanatory, so I'll let people here on the twenty-fourth. Hopefully Jimos will get it.
I'll move it.
Second, all in favor? A review ceremonial street naming, public hearing, ten twenty-four sixteen. Ms. Ferraso?
Yep, so I believe the changes were incorporated into the packet. I sent it over chat this afternoon, is it in there? Okay, so it's basically any individual organization to apply to ceremonial rename a portion of city street that has not already been ceremonial renamed, which is something we discussed. City streets may only be ceremonially named after a prominent person. That hasn't changed, it's the same criteria. A portion of the street proposed for ceremonial renaming must start and terminate in less than two blocks, which was what we came to agreement on. The application guidelines did not, well, they must obtain a minimum of five hundred signatures, we agreed on, of adults eighteen years or older. And all signatures must be from legal residents of the city at large and at least seventy-five percent of which must be from the neighborhood of the street proposed for the renaming. And I think everything else stayed as is. I did also add in, because the costs associated would fluctuate depending on signage, cost or whatever, I just put in that, I'm trying to find where in here. The cost of naming the street will be set by resolution by the city council and will directly reflect the cost of sign materials and labor. And so we will have to make, do a separate resolution for the cost now and then, you know, revisit that over time. If we be, I thought it was better than putting an actual cost in the legislation because then we'd have to go through the whole public hearing to change the, the cost involved, you know, ten years from now or five years from now, whatever the case may be. But we wouldn't, but whoever's sitting at the council table would. So unless anybody has any changes, this is what we will put out for people to review and we'll have a public hearing on this one floor.
Just a question on the seventy-five percent from the neighborhood. So that means the entire neighborhood? Like if we were going to rename Campbell Avenue, it'd be anybody in Bellevue. You'd need seventy-five percent of that.
Yes, yes, seventy-five percent of the five hundred signatures need to come from the.
I have a question on what the paragraph here, it's a portion of the street proposed, terminate in less than two blocks.
Should we say no more?
No more than two blocks.
Yeah. Must start and terminate in two blocks or less.
Two blocks or, yeah, we got you, yeah.
Because if, someone may only want one block. So just terminate in two blocks or less. Will do. Or however, I mean, Carl's going to have to put his fabulous lead leaves in here, but it's the basic criteria.
All right.
So.
This is just a review of what purpose here.
Right, this is what will be going out for the public hearing.
Any other questions? All right. Item five through thirteen, we'll go into executive sessions. I call for a motion to recess.
Actually, no, just all you do is take this.
Call for a motion to go into executive session?
Before we do the two claim items or executive side session items, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, hold, hold, oh, the property sale review is in executive session, do?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.